Hello. I had the opportunity to sit in yesterday on your meeting where you were discussing the process of choosing the next superintendent. And I appreciated that opportunity. It was an interesting discussion. As I was listening to the different firms give their reports and talk about the pool of finalists that they would propose to you, I was...
Thank you. I was especially interested in their discussion of the diversity of the pools of candidates that they might tap into. And I wanted to suggest that I have worked at companies in the private sector that have required that there's at least one person of color or specific gender diversity in the pool of finalists. And I think that that is an excellent practice that at least ensures that there is at least one person of color that you would look at for this important job. And we all know that there are a very large proportion of the teachers and people who work in K-12 education are women, yet a very small percentage of the superintendents are women. So I think it would be appropriate to try and see if there might be an opportunity to ensure that there are at least one woman in the finalist pool as well. And I do have some other thoughts about some questions that I think are really important to consider as you're looking for the next superintendent. And so I hope that you will forefront questions about integrity and public accountability and the handling of questions that challenge the district's or a school's reputation because I think those are sensitive and very important questions, I hope, and trust that you'll deal with them well. Thank you.
Pete Bowers.
I come here actually for a couple of reasons. And it's been two years since I have been retired. But first of all, I wanted to thank Rob Glass for your support of the radio station over the years. You always, whenever we wanted to interview you, you're always a trooper and would be interviewed. And when we wanted you to wear the High School Radio Day t-shirt, you wore the High School Radio Day t-shirt. And when I wanted you to be on my radio show, check with Cheryl, Cheryl checked, you were on the radio show. So thank you for your support again of the radio station. So about six years ago, nobody really knows this, I got nominated to be on the Michigan Broadcasting Hall of Fame. And so I was on the ballot for four years and I was not elected or not inducted. So I forgot about it. Then a year ago, I get a call from the Michigan Association of Broadcasters President Carol White, and she says, "You've got enough votes. We are going to put you in the Michigan Broadcasting Hall of Fame." And I said, "Wait a minute, I have some wax in the ear. Can you say that again?" She says, "It's going to be at the Grand Hotel and we're going to pay for your room." So I had to break this news to my wife that I was in the Michigan Broadcasting Hall of Fame and we're going to be in the Grand Hotel and they're paying for the room. She was more excited about being in the Grand Hotel for free than me being in the Hall of Fame. It's okay. It was a great event. It was last summer, last August. My brother Jim was there. Of course, my wife, my one son flew in from Seattle, my other son flew in from Atlanta, my Aunt Marilyn was there, and my cousin Nancy. It was a great day. Well, they have a program. And the other reason I'm here is the Bloomfield Schools paid for an ad in the program here right there, Bloomfield Hills, congratulates Pete Bowers. So I wanted to publicly thank you. Rob, I don't know who was in charge of doing that, but much appreciated. I was actually moved to see these kinds of recognition. And so I didn't ask my brother to do this, but he did. He put some of the program in a big picture thing like this, show you all out there. So it has the ads that were put in. And we're giving this to the radio station to put in there so that they can see. One of the things I'm most worried about, because it is the Pete Bowers Studio, there's people coming up there and saying, "Who is this Pete Bowers guy? And why did they name the studio after him?" Well, now Ron can just go, "Well, he's this guy and they put him in the Broadcasting Hall of Fame." So that's good news for the radio station. I think I'm the only Bloomfield Hills alumni who is in here. And then I was reading the names that are in the Hall of Fame, and it's alphabetical and it says Bill Bonds and then Pete Bowers alphabetically. I said, "Wow, I'm right next to Bill Bonds." Of which my son, who's 28, said, "Who's Bill Bonds?" So that humbled me a little bit. Anyway, and Ron is right here. Ron, I want to give this to you, the radio station. Do you want to show that to the board?
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll be up there. And I appreciate all the support that all of the board members have given to the radio station for over all these years. And Paul Cullen, I still follow you on Twitter. Nobody has ever covered Bloomfield Hills School events like that man right there. It's truly impressive. Is my five minutes up? Is my five minutes up?
I think it is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. Mark Bank?
And Kathy.
And Kathy Bank?
We come before you tonight as members of the community to recognize and to thank two people who've made tremendous differences in our lives and in the lives of our children. We've often said over the years that we're blessed in this district to have hundreds of great teachers. And I've often said beyond that, there's a few teachers, or maybe more than a few, but they're true difference makers that truly make a difference in a child's life. And then there's my friend Mark Honeyman. Mark. I could go on and on for hours talking about Mark Honeyman, but I will reduce my comments as three things that I think are a testament to his greatness and the difference that he's made in this district. Number one, year after year, at this time of year, and in December, we gather in this room, and more of his students are recognized for individual achievements than I believe any other teacher in this district, year after year and student after student. And the difference he's made in those students' lives is absolutely remarkable. Second, and most memorable to me, is eighth grade curriculum night at West Hills, which I've had the pleasure of attending more than once. In a room full of parents like this, when he's describing what his students are going to get out of that next year at West Hills, he has reduced the audience to tears each and every year, talking about his passion and his care and his concern for each and every individual student that will come before him that year. And how he connects with that audience is just something that unless you've been there, it's impossible to describe. And last, third, following eighth grade graduation each year, people line up to thank the teachers. And twice, I've had to stand in line for more than two hours to thank Mark Honeyman for his contributions. In this district, we talk about igniting the passion and fueling the dreams. And when I think of those two things, I think of you and nobody but you. You're the epitome of it. You're the poster child for it. And thank you for all you've done over the years, for our family, for our sons, for this community. We can't thank you enough. As an alumnus of this district, we moved our family back to Bloomfield Hills in 1999 so that our sons could attend the Bloomfield Hills Schools and receive the same great education that I received as a student in Bloomfield Hills. Dr. Glass, under your supervision, our sons' experiences in this school district exceeded our wildest dreams. You made them, consistent with the phrase architects of their own future, you made that come to life for both of our sons. You not only gave them the bricks and mortar to build their future, but your approach to education, your visionary approach to education, allowed them to take that bricks and mortar and to craft it and become the individuals that they are today. And without your assistance, I don't think that they would be there. You've been a leader, you've been a visionary, you've been a role model, and you've been a great friend. Two years ago, you were the Superintendent of the Year in the state of Michigan. And to our family, you're going to always be the Superintendent of the Century in Bloomfield Hills. Every time one of our sons calls us to talk about his personal or professional achievements, we'll be thinking of you and what you did to make that possible for each of them and for us. And for that, you'll have our eternal gratitude. Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
I just, you know, as this is my last school board meeting, it's been hard to take it in. You know, I've been here nine years now. When I came to this district, I came here with an open heart, an open ear, and an open mind. There were a lot of challenges at that time. And what I was so thrilled about was the community embraced each other, came together and embraced me with an open mind and open heart. And the support that I have felt, I'm so appreciative for that support. It's been my honor and my privilege to serve this community. This is my community. I live here too. And it's been a real, beyond a joy and honor, highlight of my life, really professionally, to be able to serve you. And I want to thank you. I want to say to our staff, when Mark talked about architects of their futures, that's been, we've gone on some ambitious journeys educationally. We've tried to take new ground. I think people around the state look to us as innovators, as leaders, not just because of test scores or reputation, but because they know we're always looking to get better and always looking to innovate and find ways to meet children's needs in unique and special and personal ways. We've always been about personal learning and always been true to that mission that this board set years ago and has stayed true to. So I want to thank our staff for going on that journey with, you know, together with me, being open to trying new things and really taking some new ground, not just with this building, but with all the things that we did throughout the district to try to live out loud, to try to be the best we could be for our students. And I want to thank this board for doing the same. Because over the years, you know, you empowered me, you allowed me to, some freedom to operate, you asked appropriate questions, but you also made sure that things were grounded. And the level of trust that you placed in me is really special and really important to me. And it's made me enjoy this job tremendously over these nine years. So to all of our staff, to all of our families, to all of our students, and to the support of education, I say thank you for allowing me to serve you. And thank you for making this journey professionally for me the best of my career. Thank you all very much, and I'll end my report at that. Thank you.
So as a follow-up to that, tonight I have the distinct honor of recognizing Dr. Robert J. Glass, our superintendent for the past nine years. Dr. Glass has selfishly dedicated himself to not only the students, families, and staff of Bloomfield Hills Schools, but also to the entire community as a whole. Rob is truly one of a kind. When Rob first came to the district, his warm leadership style and easygoing spirit helped resolve a decade of conflict regarding the high school. Rob spent countless hours at community gatherings, neighborhood association meetings, and even in residents' living rooms, listening to their thoughts, hopes, and dreams for the district. He demonstrated that he has a heart for service and truly cares about those he serves. In the nine years Rob has led the district, he has helped bring about tremendous growth. Rob championed the district's work around equity and inclusion. His commitment to the success of every learner is evident in not only his passionate words on the subject, but in his actions. From the global equity training to the individual global equity teams of each building, Rob has been dedicated to work around global education, equity, and inclusion. Rob has worked tirelessly to maintain healthy and positive staff relationships as well. His people-first focus has enabled the district to maintain excellent internal staff relations that ultimately led to better student outcomes. He has supported countless staff as they've grown into various positions, both inside and outside the district. And he has developed relationships and connected that directly and positively affect the professional developer of all. Thank you very much, Rob. We would now like to invite Michigan Senator Rosemary Baer to come to stage to say a few words in a special presentation.
Dr. Glass, I too would like to thank you for your service to the community. You really have touched the hearts and minds of the students and the families in this whole area, and we all appreciate that, and always will. Your own continuation of your education has really been an important role model for all of us, for me included. And the new ideas that you brought back here and the creativity and the innovations we'll benefit from for years to come. So in recognition of that tremendous contribution to the community, it is my honor to present you with this tribute from the state of Michigan. Congratulations and continued success.
With that, going to the agenda, we'd like to change the agenda. Do I have a motion to make an amendment to the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do you have a motion?
I move that in honor of Superintendent Robert Glass and in recognition of all his done for the Bloomfield Hills School Districts, that conference rooms A, B, and C at the Gary M. Doyle Professional Development Center be renamed the Dr. Robert J. Glass Board Room.
All those in favor? Well, actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. Discussion?
I want to take the opportunity to support this motion, which to me symbolizes so much of the vitally important impact of Rob's years in this district. Not only through his sheer determination to listen to every citizen and to resolve division and resolve community concerns, did he help us find a pathway to combine our two high schools and pass a bond to build this wonderful building, but he also dedicated his considerable instructional leadership skills to drive and support our staff to new heights of inspiration, to use 21st century strategies to help all our students achieve their highest potential. I can't encapsulate nine years of work in a few sentences, but as a team, Dr. Glass has worked with the Board of Education on many important initiatives. For five years now, Rob has led us in the important work of addressing problems of racism and equity, the impact on our students' learning, and this work must continue. The surprising recommendation to hire Fielding Nair as consultants on our high school project was the first of many stages of framing fresh new conversations about our cornerstones, our guiding principles, and most recently, profiles of a learner. Those frameworks have continuously elevated the professional learning of our staff and helped them identify new ways to engage every learner. Working with the board, Rob has played an instrumental role in reigniting the BHS Foundation as a philanthropic partner of our district. The foundation has found a solid footing under his vision for the foundation with a path toward funding programs and initiatives that enrich and enhance the educational experiences of our students. And as one of the BHS Foundation Board of Directors, Kathy Battlemente, we thank you for your passion and your commitment. And in 2017, the foundation established the Dr. Rob Glass Superintendent Grant in recognition of his being named Michigan Superintendent of the Year. Annually, this grant supports Rob's passion for programs that combine innovation and inspiration to engage student learning and achievement. In the past two years, the grant has supported the BHS Robotics Program and maker spaces for our middle schools. The foundation is accepting donation in Rob's name with the goal of establishing an endowment that will allow us to offer the grant in his honor for many years to come. So if you're interested in learning more about that, please look at the foundation page of the district website. But finally, I think naming the boardroom after Rob is perfect because he successfully pushed the board to approve the consolidation of all of our central administration into one site. Rob is the third superintendent to try to implement that move in my years on the board. And his proposal was simple, modest, and efficient. And the synergies that have resulted as a consequence of that move are many times greater than ever imagined. Rob is a creative, tireless, inspirational leader. I will miss him greatly. New York is very lucky to have...
Those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Tina Kostick, please come to the stage.
On behalf of all the students and all of the staff, district-wide, all the buildings, we present you with this scrapbook that was made with love and appreciation.
With that, we move to the consent agenda.
I am with the Board of Education to approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes of a special meeting on May 21st. Request to approve minutes of a study session on May 23rd. Request to approve minutes of a regular meeting on May 23rd. Request to approve 2018-19 final budget revisions. Request to approve layoff of instructional staff. Request to approve HR actions.
Do I have support? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent passes, public hearing.
Okay, here comes the screen. So we have had study sessions and dialogue regarding budget throughout the year, as well as during the development of next year's budget. Annually, there is a requirement for a public hearing, which is typically in June for next year's budget, that also incorporates the sharing of the property tax rates. So I just have a few slides here to go through. First, the property tax millage rates. Many are familiar with the term homestead property. Homestead property is now more technically referred to as principal residence, and we have an operating millage that our community so generously has approved. That operating millage rate is 6.5606%. We also have non-principal residences, and commonly referred to as non-homestead, and that is the 18 mills that the community has also approved, and that would include businesses or those that are not primary residences. For all classifications of property, there are two millage rates. One is called debt service, and that is basically the community's approval of this facility and issuing bonds to pay for the construction of this facility. We are allowed to levy whatever is required to pay the principal and interest rate on that debt, bonded indebtedness, and that is 0.9%. The sinking fund was approved last year as a replacement. It allowed us to take advantage of the expanded uses of those particular funds for security and also technology. And that rate was approved at 0.7165, but it is subject to what is called a headly rollback. Basically means that we cannot collect more dollars than the rate of inflation from year to year. And if the calculation results in that, we roll back the rate to make sure it's only an inflationary increase. And that is 0.7103 this year. All of these rates are levied 50% in the summer, which is the July 1 tax bill that, you know, some of you will be seeing soon from your communities, and also December 1st. So those are the tax rates for 2019. Next, we have next year's budget. Next year's budget, we're starting with a fund balance projected of about $19.2 million. And with revenues and expenditures of around $94 million, we are projecting that we will be spending more than revenue of about $775,000. We have very conservative assumptions, and this year with our new governor, we don't yet know what our funding will be next year. So our key variables are our funding per pupil that we will be hearing about by fall from Lansing, as well as our enrollment, which we have a projection in there, pretty conservative for next year, resulting in fund balance of about $18.5 million at the end of next year projected. Special revenue funds, there are actually a handful listed at the bottom. It does include our center program fund, which is a county-run program, tuition-based and itself-contained, International Academy, which we are the fiscal agent for the consortium of districts that participate in our center campus international... of districts that participate in our center campus International Academy. Our recreation community services provides many programs for our community. Our food services fund, and then Hills Activities. Hills Activities is a new fund this year and relates to many monies that we've been holding as an agent for our student groups, our clubs, et cetera. Accounting rules have changed where now you'll see this in this category. And then our co-curricular endowment fund. Overall, the balances, as well as the monies coming in and out, are very similar to what they were this year. And that is all. Thank you.
Next, any public comment? No public comment. We'll go to Board Business. Request to approve the 2019-20 original budget. Do I have a motion?
In accordance with Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, I move with the Board of Education to adopt the attached resolution and related original budgets for fiscal year 2019-2020 for the general fund and special revenue funds as required by law and summarized as follows. For the general fund, revenue or transfers in $93,744, expenditures or transfers out $94,475,567, for revenue under expenditures of $775,127. For the special revenue funds, revenue or transfers in of $19,679,313, expenditures or transfers out of $19,754,521, for revenue under expenditures of $75,208.
Discussion? All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Budget passes. Next, 9B. Do I have amendment to the agenda? It's on.
It's on the agenda.
Search firm? Want to make a motion? Okay.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Ray and Associates as the consultant to conduct a comprehensive search for a superintendent for the Bloomfield Hills Schools to succeed Dr. Robert Glass in accordance with the terms of their submitted proposal.
Do I have support? Discussion?
There was some discussion last night when we were interviewing the candidates that there was some follow-up going to be happening over the next 24 hours, so I was wondering whether we can have an update on that.
Any more information on Ray and Associates because we had more feedback already on the other firm that we had spoken with? And so I was able to speak to the Board of Education Presidents in Greenwich, Connecticut. I particularly wanted to contact with them because I noticed that on the list of searches that have been conducted previously, that Greenwich came up twice and that there was a superintendent who had only served for one year, and so I wanted to understand why that would have been. And so their president informed me that that superintendent's spouse had taken a job in Colorado and that she needed to move to be with her husband, that they were very satisfied with her as having been their selection, but also because that had occurred within the guarantee of their search, that they did not charge them to do a second search, and their new person is about to start for them. Their board did work collaboratively with Ray and Associates to make that determination. They said the most important thing, I had a very good conversation with the board president. They did say, you know, be sure that we take our time, don't be in a rush, make sure that we get all, you know, can work with the firm. They felt that the support that they got in the back office and the organization of the firm was strong. If they needed something, if they felt they needed to prompt the associates who were working with them, they did have access to Mr. Ray himself, who made sure that things were to their satisfaction. The other board president that I was able to speak with at like 4:35 this afternoon, after some juggling, was the board president from Shaker Heights, Ohio. Their new superintendent is starting next week. He, and both of these gentlemen had been on their firms with other searches with other firms, and so they had some perspective and longevity. I think what I learned is that no matter which firm you choose, you know, you need to work with the individuals who are assigned directly to you. They had a cautionary tale in Shaker Heights that Ray Associates did also contract with a next-door community simultaneously, so that might be something we want to talk with them about. They did use, one of the gentlemen from Ray Associates who was with us last night also was part of their team, and they had not had Ray Fassbender. They felt that they got excellent support from the firm, and they did two and a half days of community with 32 groups that they had met with on their behalf. So if we wish to be sure that our community has full opportunity to give us feedback, they can manage that.
Any other discussion?
I guess I would like to say that both firms were excellent that we interviewed, and they were both very impressive. I was particularly interested in the process that was going, the overall process that was to be used, and in the proposals and in the discussions, they both had excellent processes. I particularly liked the detail of the Ray and Associates in that they were detailing actually how they would facilitate working with us to come up with that slate of finalists, and I thought that was very powerful compared to the second firm that would just provide us with the slate, so I thought that was an excellent point. And actually, to one of our public comment, Ray and Associates, you know, very transparently in their bullets, had brought out the diversity of their candidates and the breadth of the number of candidates, sorry, associates, and their diversity as well, and I thought that was a very strong point, and they brought that up without being prompted, and I think that is also very aligned with our overarching strategic plan in our district. So I think that's a very good choice.
And Ray and Associates is a national firm.
Yes.
They have over 160 associates working with them, so it will be a national search.
I want to say, I'd like to exit in the middle of the meeting and come back toward the end, but I did have a chance to, by the way, thank you to Vicki Chambers for getting the video out very quickly. I was able to watch it today, the part that I missed. And for me, I was also really appreciative of the time and the detail of the presentations we saw yesterday, but what I liked about Ray and Associates was the ability to be able to reach candidates of typically underrepresented classes, women and people of color in particular, and I liked that they were transparent in their own employment of people of typically underrepresented classes as well.
All those, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Closing comments. Congratulations, Rob. Thank you very much. I know this will be your last board meeting. Thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn to student-staff recognition.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm proud to be able to recognize three outstanding individuals. Before we bring our Distinguished Service Award winners on the stage, I'd first like to share with you a bit about the Distinguished Service Award and our three honorees. In Bloomfield Hills Schools, staff are dedicated to providing a meaningful learning experience for each and every student. The Distinguished Service Award was established in 1977 and is given annually to recognize extraordinary contributions and service by BHS staff members, community members, parents, board members, and alumni. Nominees for this award are exceptionally dedicated and consistently go above and beyond the call of duty. They exemplify the district's core values, mission statement, and portrait of a learner. To be nominated for the Distinguished Service Award, individuals or groups must put together a video entry to explain why their nominee is deserving of the award. Thank you to Vicki Chandler for editing together this brief video to help introduce tonight's winners. Let's take a look.
Okay. Excuse me. Let's see. Is this it?
If you had to describe Mr. Ray in three words, what would you use and why?
He's inspiring, hardworking, and extremely dedicated.
Determined, organized, and considerate. He writes everything out on the whiteboard, he keeps our team in check, and makes sure we know what we have to do, and he also cares about our opinions and takes everything into consideration.
Mr. Ray is very forward-thinking. He's always thinking about the next thing, the next way that our team can help other peoples in the area and around the world as well. He's very intuitive. We've done a lot of programs. We've gone to the U.N., we've gone to Washington D.C. to advocate for these after-school STEM programs, and we've helped out the farm. We've just done a lot of great things that he's helped immensely in.
Dedication, precision, and leadership.
Tell us something about Mr. Ray that other people wouldn't know.
He always helps and tries to help in different situations, no matter how emotional and complicated they may be. He makes sure that each of the kids on the team know that they can talk to him and get their situation figured out. He always likes to help.
He's very hardworking. You can tell that he's constantly thinking about how it can impact the community. He's just a great leader and very involved in helping his students grow and helping the team look clear forward.
I think I've learned a lot about just how to incorporate so many various ideas into one. I think he does a really good job of taking all of our ideas and then making it into a cohesive unit.
He likes jokes a lot more than he seems on the surface level, but he's actually a really fun guy.
It is our distinct honor as a West Hills community to nominate Mr. Mark Honeyman for the Bloomfield Hills School District's Distinguished Service Award. And yes, the image of the child on the screen is Mark when he was a newborn. With the birth of every child, we hope that they will find their purpose, and Mr. Honeyman's case became clear early on that he was meant to be a teacher. As a teacher, he's been instrumental in inspiring his students to not only passionately pursue their purpose, he has done it in a way that exemplifies the Bloomfield Hills' mission statement.
I would say Mr. Honeyman is empathetic. He's always looking out for the well-being of the students. He's admirable. We can look up to him as a person and a teacher. I would say he's the consummate English teacher.
When I hear Mr. Honeyman's name, I think of compassionate, determined, and comforting.
I would say he is selfless, cheerful, and considerate.
Mr. Honeyman is dedicated, iconic, and a father figure.
If there are three words to describe Mr. Honeyman as a teacher, I would say he's reassuring, supportive, and understanding.
Anyone who knows Mr. Honeyman, has been a student of his and works with him as a colleague, I know him to be very kind at heart, very considerate, and very passionate about children and what he loves.
Three words to describe him are extraordinary, welcoming, and loving.
Mr. Honeyman is inspiring, a leader, and indescribable, because there's so many words to describe him, but you can never list all of them.
I was asked to explain three words that describe you. The first word that came to my mind was compassionate, but then, when I looked it up to try to get a better word, I realized that every single one of these synonyms, sympathetic, empathetic, understanding, caring, concerned, sensitive, tender-hearted, thoughtful.
I feel like Mr. Honeyman developed such a great connection with his students in the classroom and outside the classroom. I know that when I ever needed something outside the classroom, I could always email him, and I know that he would help me no matter what the circumstances were.
Mr. Honeyman was a great teacher, and he really helped me learn, and I also loved going to the county meetings that he and his wife held, and it really made me feel a closer to him.
Mr. Honeyman was such a memorable teacher and mentor because all of the vocab and writing skills he taught us, I still use today.
He taught me not only what it means to be a good student, but also a good person, and I know today if I still had a problem, I could solve it.
Mr. Honeyman was the best teacher I've ever had. He was so amazing in every way, and I learned so much from him.
The three words that come to my mind are dedication, he's available at night by emails and everything else, compassion, he's got one of the biggest hearts that I've ever seen, and integrity.
So I would say three words that describe Mark, Mr. Honeyman, would be passionate. He's very passionate about his subject matter, very passionate about teaching. I would say dedicated is one of the words. He's very exceptionally dedicated to his students and to his craft, and I would say the other one would be supportive. He's exceptionally supportive to the families at West Hills and to the students at West Hills, and has been so for all 35 years of his career.
Mrs. Parker is one of the most exceptional educators that I've ever seen. She has a unique gift and skill set that she can reach the needs of every single child in their classroom. A kid walks into that room and they feel welcomed and loved, and as a coworker who's been in multiple roles working with her, I feel the same exact way. There's not one other person that I would nominate for this award.
As a teammate and mentor, Angie has been a phenomenal role model to me in what it means to foster to the needs of every child and welcome each child into her classroom. She's constantly pushing herself to be a better educator and to be even better in every single way. She's always trying new things and willing to take risks if it's going to be best for the needs of the child.
I've had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Parker as a coworker and also as a parent. My daughter was in her classroom, and she had a wonderful experience. She always came home telling me about how great Mrs. Parker was and how they got to try new things, and I am in global champions right now with Angie, and she just brings so much to the table, and she's so open-minded, and I've learned a lot from her.
I have interacted with Angie as a teammate in first grade and also as a parent. My son is in first grade with her right now, and there are many times in teaching where you encounter challenges, and she was always the person that I could go to and express a need or express a concern, and she was always there no matter what. As a parent, you hear things come home from your students, and you think, oh, that's great, they're exploring this, or they have observations that they're doing. And I've heard all the vocabulary coming home, and I've been impressed. But what I've been most impressed by with Angie is that my son loves learning, and he feels like he is in charge of his own learning experiences. So when it was his birthday this week and we had to get a present for students in the classroom, he thought, we're studying plants, and what better gift than to buy everyone's seeds? And so he purchased seeds for every member of his classroom and then an observation booklet so they could write down some things that they noticed. This is just one small example of how she inspires her coworkers and her students to be like foreign learners.
Thank you very much. So as you can see, we have three very hard-working people to recognize this evening. Will you please join me in welcoming Andy Rain, Mark Honeyman, and Angie Parker to the stage? Andy, Mark, and Angie, you have worked tirelessly in support of our students, staff, and community, and you are so very deserving of this award. Thank you for your unwavering and unconditional support of Bloomfield Hills Schools. We have one more round of applause for them, please. Mary?
For the newsletter.
To those being recognized this evening, please come up on stage when your group or name is called via the stage to my right. You will then cross to the center of the stage and remain there for your portion of the presentation. When your section is complete, please cross to the podium so that I and other members of the administration may shake your hand. Each individual being recognized this evening will receive a recognition pin. We know all success stories require more than one person to help a student achieve their goals, which is why we would first like to recognize the family members, classmates, teachers, and coaches of the students being honored tonight. If you are here to support a student or staff member, please acknowledge this evening. Please stand. Your encouragement is essential to the continued success of the BHS family, and the board would like to extend our gratitude. To start off, we would like to welcome to the stage Kathy Bellamante, Executive Director of the Bloomfield Hills School Foundation, the Director of the Foundation Board, Linda Finkel, and Foundation volunteer Anne Marie Veronin to the stage. On deck, could we please have Kenny Gretcher to the students? So if you are seated in the balcony, please make your way down to the lower level now.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Bellamante. I'm the Executive Director of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Foundation, and it's my honor to recognize two of our Foundation Board members tonight. These women have both made substantial contributions, not only to the foundation, but to the BHS community at large. Anne Marie Veneroni and her family joined the BHS community in 2014 when her daughter was a first grader at Conant. She jumped in with both feet, volunteering in numerous roles, including as a director on the BHS Foundation. Anne Marie brought with her a wealth of knowledge from her tenure on a school foundation in Pennsylvania. She also brought her can-do attitude and pragmatic approach. Her contributions are outstanding. This year, she's single-handedly coordinated all of our vendors for our signature gala, the BHS Celebration. Anne Marie, thank you for your tremendous contributions to the foundation and our schools. Linda Finkel has been a committed supporter of the Bloomfield Hills Schools for the past 50 years. Her children attended BHS, and over the years, she has volunteered in many capacities, including as President of the Board of Education. The BHS Foundation has benefited from her tenure as a Director on our Board. She is retiring from our Board this year, and we will miss her perspective and wisdom. Thank you, Linda, for your support and commitment. You will be sorely missed. We hope you will stay in touch and continue to share your sage advice with us.
Let's welcome to the stage Kenny Getler and his students Sahana Rao and Neil Pulakat to the stage. And on deck, can we please have Dennis Kwasny and his students? If you are seated in the balcony, please make your way down to the lower level.
I'm Kenny Gecter. I'm Jason Rubel, Principal of East Hills. And I... Do we have Sahana? Yep. And Neil, they're coming down. So we're pretty proud at East Hills of some of our competitions that we do on an annual basis. And Sahana, you can stand right over there. Each year, East Hills holds a school-wide spelling bee in conjunction with the Scripps National Spelling Bee. After our individual classroom bees are completed, the school bee takes place and students battle for the title of Spelling Champion of East Hills. And this year, the title belongs to sixth grader Sahana Rao. After a fierce battle, Sahana and a seventh grader of ours, Sahana prevailed and represented East Hills at the County Spelling Bee held at Oakland Schools. And a very hearty congratulations to Sahana for her notable achievement. And it doesn't look like Neil was able to make it, but along with our spelling bee, we have a National Geographic Geography Bee, and this competition is held across the nation and is designed to test the geographic knowledge of our fourth through eighth grade students. And similar to the Scripps Spelling Bee, this year, we had our first. An eighth grader, Neil Pulakat, became our GOB Champ, not just from this year, but last year as well. So even though he wasn't able to make it, if we could give him a little hearty applause. Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Dennis Kwasny and Alan Zhang to the stage.
Hello, I'm Dennis Kwasny. I'm a teacher here at the high school. I would like to introduce Alan Zhang. Alan received honors for his performance in the U.S. National Chemistry Olympiad Competition. He ranked second in the state for the national exam and among the top 150 students in the nation for chemistry. Alan also competed in the United States Biology Olympiad, in which he ranked second in Michigan and among the top 60 students in the nation for biology. In addition, Alan was named a Coolidge Senator by the Coolidge Foundation and will attend the Senator Summit in Washington DC this August. Finally, this summer, Alan will be doing research at the University of Michigan on the enzymes involved in DNA repair pathways. I was privileged to be Alan's biology and chemistry teacher. It is a pleasure to recognize Alan Zhang.
Can we have Matt McLeod and Brady Crimmens, please, come to the stage?
Okay. The White House Commission on Presidential Scholars selects the top student annually from their academic success, as well as evidence of community service, leadership, and demonstrated commitment to high ideals. To all the parents out there, of the 3.6 million students graduating from high school this year, 5,200 candidates from across the country qualified. From this list, 161 were chosen, two from the state of Michigan, one boy and one girl. One of them is from Bloomfield Hills Public Schools. We are beyond thrilled that Bloomfield Hills High School's Braden Crimmens was chosen to receive the Presidential Scholar Medalion for the class of 2019. This recognizes Brady as the top graduating male student in the state of Michigan. He is... He is the humblest kid you would ever want to meet, and it was like pulling teeth to get him to share his resume with you. But here you go. He is captain of the Model United Nations and cross-country teams. He is a national AP Scholar with distinction, having taken 15 AP exams, gotten a five on every single exam, earning 58 of the 128 credits. Ready, Mark? He will need to graduate from U of M, where he is attending the Regents Merit Scholarship next year. He has won the BYU Youth Citizen Award twice, Bloomfield Optimist Award, served on a task force for the state of Michigan's social studies standards. He wrote two amicus briefs for our attorneys in the classroom. His first one was cited on the majority side, and his second case was just heard on Tuesday. I'm assuming he'll win. He has interned at U of M's embedded law system. And lastly, like a lot of students, Brady was really impacted by the events at Parkland last year. Rather than vent on Twitter, he started his own 501(c)(3) organization and helped register 350 high school seniors to vote last year. Our entire district could not be prouder of Brady. He will be receiving his medallion from the Secretary of Education June 23rd, along with his parents, Casey and Nina Crimmens. Brady Crimmens, everybody.
Next, we welcome Jason Rice and BHMS student Michael Lu to the stage.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jason Rice. I'm a teacher at Bloomfield Hills Middle School. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, and I also want to thank our Board of Education for recognizing the accomplishment of all of our students. Michael Lu is a sixth grader at Bloomfield Hills Middle School, and I have been lucky enough to be his math counts coach the past couple of years. This year, Michael...
Qualified for the Oakland County Chapter Competition for our Math Counts State Competition. In the state competition, Michael came in third, which made... He was one of four students to represent the entire state of Michigan for all middle school levels at the national competition. He was also the first ever student from Bloomfield Hills School District to go to national math counts. At nationals, Michael came in 66th overall and was the second-ranked sixth grader in the entire country. I am very proud of Michael's efforts. I am very proud of Michael's efforts as not only a mathematician and a student, but just as a person. He is so just humble and awesome of a young man, and I look forward to seeing all the wonderful things he's going to do as he gets older. So thank you, Michael, and thank you, Board, for this event.
Please help me welcome to the stage Lauren Neworth and Eve Pierre, along with the Forensics Students from East Hills, West Hills, and BHMS.
Good evening. My name is Eve Pierre. I am the choir teacher at West Hills Middle School and Bloomfield Hills Middle School. I also moonlight after-school as a forensics coach, and this is my second year, along with two other coaches, Callie Gentile and Stephanie Potier. And it really has become a passion. So this evening, I'm actually going to recognize a student from East Hills on behalf of Jay Schumacher and Elizabeth Akers, the coaches there, and also our students at West Hills. So I wanted to start with a student from East Hills. This was my first spring season with MIFSA as a judge, and I was a little nervous. And I sit down in the room, and a young man comes up, first person, 9:00 AM, super poised and just so together and so confident. And about 30 seconds into his speech, I am in tears. And he was a poetry competitor. And as I'm watching, I'm just so enthralled with this child that I am now crying. And after that round, we rank the students, and as the students walking out, I'm thinking, gosh, that kid looks really familiar. And gosh, his dad looks really familiar. Well, I'd first like to recognize an East Hill student on Be Notes to Me until after it was over. First place in poetry was Justice Southward. Well done, Justice. And our students at West Hills, we have quite a few this spring season. I'd like to first start out with Rachel Baris. She is being recognized for second place in Dramatic Inter. And yeah, you know what? Step forward, Rachel. You've earned it. We have a group of students that this year, when I selected the multiple, and multiple is an event that you can have up to eight students in, this group, majority are sixth graders, and we had one seventh grader, and we selected Matilda as our multiple. And these sixth graders and one seventh grader really did a fine job. They placed second place in the multiple. These members of the multiple are Sloan Jaffe, Madison Kraft, Emily Kruger... These members of the multiple are Sloan Jaffe, Madison Kraft, Emily Kruger, Reese Rabinowitz, We also had a sixth grader, new to our team this year, Donika Lynn. If she is here, would she please step forward as the second-place recipient for impromptu in the fifth, sixth grade category? We also have a first... We have a little bit of a legacy going on at West Hills with our storytelling category. We have a first-place finish in our storytelling category for fifth, sixth, and that is Chase And lastly, we have one student who throughout his career at West Hills, sixth grade through eighth grade, for all six tournaments, consistently placed first in the state every single tournament. And he's our first-place storyteller in seventh and eighth grade, and that's Paul Abdnar. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren Neworth.
Hello, my name is Lauren Neworth. I am the head coach at Bloomfield Hills Middle School for the forensics team. Last... Nope, two months ago, our team, we took around six... almost 70 kids to the middle-level state competition held here at our high school, and we had great success all around. Our kids really performed well and carried themselves with poise and respect and kindness, which is the biggest thing I stress when I lead my team, so I'm really proud of them for all that they do. In particular, I want to recognize some people that placed first and second. Henry Jackson placed first in impromptu. Natalie Robb, first in prose interpretation. Drew Davis and Walker Fairbanks were second in duo interpretation. Charlie Wellam, second in informative. Nick Getler, second in original interpretation. Sydney Sabrin, second place in storytelling, right behind Paul. And we had a four-way tie in the multiple interpretation category, and one of our multiples also was lucky enough to tie for second place with the Mary Poppins multiple, and that is John Paul Otto, Brooke Bogajewski, Peter Bungart, Nora Muhammad Ali, Hugh Waters IV, and Juliette Zimmerman. So, thank you so much.
Please help me welcome our teacher, Barb Brownson, and Nia Mikolos to the stage.
Hi, everybody. I'm not Barb Brownson. That's Barbara over there. We also have Peg Pasternak and Tessa Basirica. We're the Bloomfield Hills High School Art Department, and we're here to tell you about Nia Mikolos. The Michigan Youth Arts Festival is the culmination of a nine-month search for the finest artistic talent in Michigan high schools. More than 250,000 students across the state participate in the selection process. A photo by one of our students was selected as one of the top 100 in the state. In addition, her photo is part of the Governor's Traveling Exhibit and will be displayed in various locations around Michigan. Congratulations to sophomore Nia Mikolos.
Do we now have teacher David Lumson and the award recipients of the Media and Me
Media and Me Writing Competition is organized by the Muslim parents of Bloomfield Hills. Contest seeks to raise students' awareness of media bias and to encourage them to look beyond headlines to find the real story. Awards are given to students whose work exemplifies this media curiosity and highlights significant social issues. I have the pleasure of introducing four incredible young women whose work addressed issues that range from social media to police brutality. Lucia Farah achieved the gold level. Isha Gomoraju achieved the gold level as well. Molly Sosha, silver level. And Anna Kalabat, bronze level. I'll also be presenting for Lauren Rowe, the eighth-grade winners of the America and Me Essay Contest through the Farm Bureau. After completing their essay on their own personal Michigan hero, 10 essays from East Hills were submitted to the state-level contest. Out of the 10 essays East Hills submitted, Sonia Hussain received first place, Emma Trozak, second place, and Avery Lynch, third place.
Do we have teacher Christina Rayborn and the Scholastic Art and Writing Award winners?
Hello. I'm Christina Rayborn. I'm the art teacher at East Hills Middle School. Each year, East Hills participates in the Scholastic Art Awards Competition. Our regional area is comprised of Lenawee, Livingston, Monroe, Oakland, Wasna, and Wayne Counties. There are more than 6,200 works of art and 250 portfolios from middle school and high school students, which are then adjudicated and selected for Honorable Mention Silver and Gold Key Awards. This year, we had four eighth-grade students from East Hills recognized for their artwork. Georgia Howey, who is not here today, received an honorable mention. Kayla Kissendial received an honorable mention. Kayla, you want to wave or something? Everybody know who you are? Luke Crawford, who received a gold key.
I'd like to call Lauren Rowe and her students who wrote winning essays in the annual Farm Bureau Insurance Contest to the stage. Got it covered? Okay. Now, please help me welcome Randy Odom and two of his... Well, I know these two students.
Good evening. My name is Randy Odom, and as Mr. Coleman had introduced me, I am the current advisor of DECA, which is new to Bloomfield Hills School District, Bloomfield Hills High School. And DECA is a student organization, excuse me, which is meant to build business skills, research, team-building, and public speaking for prospective business students. And I'd like to present to you Ashika Dadich and Catherine Heath for recognition for outstanding achievement. Ashika and Katie represented Bloomfield Hills High School in the international competition for DECA, held in Orlando, Florida in April. The conference had 22,500 student participants from the United States and seven other countries competing in over 50 categories. Ashika and Katie made the final round in their category, Integrated Marketing Campaign Service. Of the final 20 teams, Ashika and Katie distinguished themselves by placing second internationally, which is an outstanding achievement. Ladies, I'd like to say congratulations.
We did this for Barb Brownson and the 2019 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards? Okay.
So, the Alliance of Young Artists and Writers released its national results for 2019 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. This is a contest that's been going on for over 90 years, and senior Rory Berman, junior Jenny Shi, who's not here, and sophomore Nolan Lopez won national silver award medals for their photography. This year, the Alliance reviewed more than 340,000 submissions of art and writing by creative teenagers from across the country. Their awards placed them amongst the top 1% of all participants. Congratulations to Rory, Jenny, and Nolan, as well as art teachers Barb Brownson and
Guesse Tessa Basarico... Circo? Okay, all right, all right, all right. And Brooklyn Beckelley and Isabella Bartlett to the stage.
Senior art and music students have an opportunity to compete for the prestigious Robert C.J. Trob Memorial Scholarship. This competition has been going on for over 50 years and is exclusive and unique to Bloomfield Hills Schools. Students complete an essay and resume, create an exhibit of their works, and are interviewed by a panel of five judges. It's a really intense process. The winner receives money towards studying abroad and traveling through Europe. I'd like to once again honor this year's winners. Congratulations to this year's Trob Art winner, Brooklyn Beckelley. And Trob Art alternate, Isabella Bartlett. They are enormously talented and hard workers, and we look forward to seeing their work in the future.
We get Matt McLeod to the stage along with his students he has recognized this evening. If you are being recognized for your writing by Mr. McLeod tonight, please come up to
Okay, so I'm here to introduce our Model United Nations team to you, but I want to try something a little bit different in respecting... in respecting the two-minute time limit. Model UN is a program that we're really proud to have at our school, and one of the skills that Model UN teaches is the ability to address a large group of strangers and keep to a timeline. So my seniors are going to introduce themselves.
In past years of this ceremony, we have stood up here and read out the names of each member of the team, describing individual awards as well as things that were received. However, this has never been what Model UN is, and it didn't represent everything that this team stands for. At the end of the day, this team is just that, a team. It thrives off of collaboration, shared knowledge, and lifting each other up towards a common goal. The individual awards that are so sought after aren't possible if delegates don't learn to lead while also learning to compromise.
Even cooperation between committees is essential to our team's success at conferences. Committee topics are recycled, which means that people who have debated a topic before can help out those who haven't. I know that I personally have stayed up till 2:00 a.m. explaining the Israeli-Palestinian crisis to some of the delegates over here who are debating it, just like a bunch of people helped me out over the years. So because this cooperation and this institutional knowledge of the team is so important to the way we succeed, we wanted to be recognized this year as a unit.
So, could everyone who competed or worked at a conference this year, please step forward?
That should be all of you.
Yeah, okay, just stand there.
And we also want to take some time to recognize individual subsets of them. Can we have everyone who went to MSU step forward, or like the people who didn't, step back a little bit so that we can recognize them too? MSU is the biggest conference we go to, and these people represented our school there exceptionally well. Let's hear it for them.
All right. So if you guys could step back a little bit, just for a second. Lastly, could everyone who competed at the Oakland University Conference please step forward? This year, these delegates were recognized as the best team present at the competition due to all of their hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm. Let's give them a hand.
All right. Thank you all for your time. We tried to keep it brief, and we appreciate that you guys stayed until like near the end of this ceremony. Thank you so much.
And our senior captains, Emily Williams and Brady Crimmens. And our senior captains, Emily Williams and Brady Crimmens.
Like to welcome Coach Kelly Cook to the stage along with the 2834 Bionic Blackhawks.
Hello there. The Bionic Blackhawks Robotics Team this year qualified for the World Championship for the eighth straight year. The event in Detroit in the spring began with this team being inducted in the first Hall of Fame. Even more impressive was that during that competition, the judges talked with many of our students on a variety of topics. Out of the over 400 teams in attendance, they were so impressed by our teams and as well as our school districts' continued commitment to STEM education that they bestowed upon us the first championship engineering inspiration award, which celebrates its outstanding success in advancing respect and appreciation for engineering within a team, school, or organization and community. This award is especially noteworthy as it's the only time that a chairman awards-winning team the next year earned this engineering inspiration award.
Now we'd like to welcome to the stage Janice Seaton and the students of the West Hills Press.
In April, the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association held its annual spring conference. School newspapers across the state of Michigan submit work in various categories to be evaluated against their peers. West Hills was awarded 12 first-place awards, five second-place awards, six third-place awards, and five honorable mentions. We competed in the middle school category, and if you'll look, we're a little height challenged because some of our middle schools are only in fourth grade. First-place awards were won by Andrew Greenhut for comic strip, Shayna Kaufman and Melissa Sermant for story package, Ben Saperstein and Wayland Joe for news story, Katiana Kostoff and Jamie Miller for review, Ben Saperstein for informative feature, Bella Elzon for alternative story form, Seth Kruger for sports feature story, Seth Kruger for sports feature action photo, Madison Kessler for sports feature photo, Narajan Nantharaman for news feature photo, and Narajan has won this three years in a row. Isabel Johnson for environmental portrait, Katiana Kostoff, Jenna Lepley, and Wayland Joe for photo story. Second-place awards were won by Grace Mayne for story package, Katiana Kostoff and Jenna Lepley for alternative story form, Madison Kessler for sports feature story, Grace Mayne for sports feature story, and Narajan Nantharaman for photo story. Third-place awards for Andrew Greenhut for review, Isabel Johnson, Madison Kessler, Grace Mayne, and Ava Moya for informative feature, Ben Saperstein for human interest feature, Jaden Reich for personal narrative, Shayna Kaufman for personal profile, Jay Balla for environmental health and science, and honorable mentions by Sophia Terribisi for news story, Shayna Kaufman for a byline opinion, Wayland Joe for bylined opinion, Ari Matson Bridger for personal profile, and Wayland Joe for environmental health and science. Congratulations, all journalists.
I guess we know where our Hawkeye talent pool is coming from. Please help me welcome Jason Rice and his math students from BHMS.
So again, I'm Jason Rice, teach at Bloomfield Hills Middle School, and again, thank you for coming out. Tonight, I want to recognize, this is just some of my awesome Team 6B math students, the ones that were able to make it. And so I want to recognize them because this year in math, as part of our algebra unit in sixth grade, we decided to study rate of change by using the idea of a competitive fundraiser, where different class hours would compete against one another to see who could have the greatest daily rate of change in their money collected. The students were very excited as they went ahead and picked St. Jude Children's Research Hospital for this event. And over the course of 15 class days, I was blown away and amazed to see their hard work and dedication to both helping St. Jude and to studying the math behind the fundraiser. In the end, the students were able to have a better understanding of rate of change along with how we can help others. I am extremely grateful and proud of the fact that over our 15 days, the students were able to raise $1,964 for St. Jude's. Again. I am blown away and extremely proud of their efforts, and again, I look forward to seeing their continued success as both students and humanitarians. Thank you for taking the time this evening.
And of course, Mark Honeyman and his students being recognized for their amazing writing skill.
All right, well, thank you so much. It's great to be here and to honor all these extraordinary student writers from West Hills eighth grade. I'd like to begin with, if Alexa Kessler, Eli Cook, and Rachel Barris could take a step forward, please. For the America in Me Contest, Michigan students wrote essays about their personal Michigan hero. And we had two students who were recognized from excellence from among our West Hills entries in second and third place among some of the best student writers I've ever taught in my life. So I would like to recognize Rachel Barris and Eli Cook. Congratulations to both of you. And Alexa, if you'd take one more step forward. Alexa was a student who made it to the state level of judging as a finalist and finished just one notch below getting into the top 10, and I'm incredibly proud of her accomplishments. Well done, Alexa. Congratulations. Natalie Simone, if you would step forward, please. For the Patriots Pen Essay Contest, students had to write about why I honor the American flag. Natalie took a first-place post-award, the sixth out of the last eight years West Hills eighth grader, to do so, and received a $100 prize and was honored at a banquet this past January. Congratulations for keeping up the tradition. Would Erin Miller, Natalie Simone, and Solvi Sala please step forward?
The Cappy Family Anne Frank Art and Writing Contest seeks to empower and inspire today's students to lead our world to a better future. The overall theme is the power of change, and the prompt is a quote from Anne Frank about how each of us has the power to make a difference. This year, West Hills had three students who were recognized in this contest. Erin Miller and Natalie Simone received honorable mentions and a $25 prize, Erin for her poetry, and Natalie for her nonfiction. Congratulations to both of you. We also had the first-place award winner in the poetry contest, Solvi Sala, who was awarded a $300 prize, and all three of them are going to be honored next Wednesday in a ceremony at the Holocaust Memorial Center. Congratulations. Would Jennifer Guan, Erin Miller, Leila Abdul, Solvi Sala, please step forward? This year, several of our students received special recognition in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, which is by far the premier writing contest in the nation. Several of our students won honorable mentions, which is an extraordinary accomplishment in and of itself in a national contest of this magnitude. Jennifer Guan for her poetry, Erin Miller for a play she wrote, Leila Abdul for her poetry, and Solvi Sala for her poetry. Congratulations to all four of you. And Solvi, if you would stay put for a second. She received a Midwest Region Gold Key, which is the highest honor you can receive in the Midwest region, which covers four or five different states, and she is also a silver medalist in the nation. She is one of only three eighth graders in the entire state of Michigan to receive this recognition in the Scholastic Writing Awards, and I'm incredibly proud of it. Congratulations. Would Carly Caymans, and I wasn't sure if I could see her, in the lineup there, Gabby Porter, please step forward? Ah, there she is. Yay. That was perfect. I mean, Gabrielle. Wow. Come on over next to Carly. In the Breaking Barriers Essay Contest, sponsored by Major League Baseball and Scholastic Incorporated, students share their personal stories about how they have used some of Jackie Robinson's values to face their own barriers. Two West Hills eighth graders, these young ladies you see before you, earned top honors. Carly Caymans, the first young lady, was a national finalist. That means she was among the top 30 writers in the entire United States of America. Congratulations, Carly. Gabrielle earned an MVP winner award this year. Receiving that award means that Gabrielle ranks among the top 10 essays submitted from across the entire United States. She won a laptop computer, a set of books signed by Sharon Robinson, the daughter of Jackie Robinson, a set of T-shirts for the entire eighth-grade class with a quote from her paper emblazoned across the back of the shirt, and she was honored both at West Hills and at Comerica Park, where she was brought out onto the field and given accolades in front of a crowd of baseball fans. And as a part of that, I was also asked to throw out the first pitch. Scared me to death. For everything you accomplished in that contest, Gabrielle, I'm thrilled to recognize you. Congratulations.
Will Daniel Tier and her forensic students please come to the stage? I'll talk. I think I can talk about the forensic students. So this year, we had three, two are here today, that won state championships in forensics this year. We have Kirsten McCullin, Ava O'Tremba, and who's not here today, Deborah Moritas. Forensics, which is a name for public speaking, these three had an incredible run all year. Throughout the year, they were either in the final competitions in their, in the tournaments throughout the year. But what was remarkable is during the weekend in states at Oakland University, both performed, had to perform five different times, and practically had almost a perfect weekend in terms of their public speaking. Ava O'Tremba basically as an underclassman to win states, both of them as underclassmen to win states alone is a remarkable accomplishment. Just to win states is a remarkable accomplishment, but to win as underclassmen was remarkable. So congratulations both on winning forensic state tournament. We have Rachel Matts and her students come to the stage from the Hawkeye. Assuming it's the Hawkeye.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rachel Matts. I am an English teacher here, and I advise the Hawkeye newspaper. Tonight, I would like to honor the staff of the Hawkeye, our school's print news publication. These students have demonstrated a commitment to journalistic excellence this year as they have created and edited both our print publication and stories for our news website, BHHS Today, a collaborative effort of the Hawkeye, BHSTV News, and the BIF. This year, the Hawkeye received the Spartan Award with a seal of distinction at the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association's Spring Conference. The Spartan Award is the highest honor that a school news publication can receive in the state. I'm particularly proud that the Hawkeye Spartan Award included the seal of distinction, which indicates that our administration does not require prior review of the paper before its publication. I'm so appreciative of our administration placing their trust in our student journalists. In addition to the overall Spartan Award, Hawkeye journalists received 39 individual awards at the spring conference. I would like to individually recognize this year's editors-in-chief, Ria Doshi and Evan Stern, without whom none of this would be possible. I'm thrilled to congratulate the staff of the Hawkeye, and I look forward to many years of future. of future success, and please grab a copy of the paper on your way out.
Last, but certainly not least, please help me welcome Bridget, Cavachinko, Steven Hyatt, and the Cyber Patriot team to the stage.
Hello. Thank you for honoring the East Hills Cyber Patriot team tonight. Cyber Patriots is a national youth cyber defense competition that challenges teams of high school and middle school students to compete in fixed vulnerabilities in virtual operating systems. Cyber Patriots is about defending our systems. It's not about hacking, although the students do learn something about that. Alex and Douglas competed in six rounds of competition from September, that went through from September through February. Each round was six hours long, and they went across different challenges. Alex competed on the Windows, securing Windows 10, Windows 8.1, and Douglas did Window, Windows Server 2016. They both competed on Linux operating systems, and they both competed on a networking challenge and a networking online quiz. I'm very proud of these two. This is the first of Bloomfield Hills competing in a Cyber Patriot competition, and they competed against 749 other teams nationally in the middle school division, and they took first place, first place in the state of Michigan, and they advanced to the semifinal rounds, where only the first 50% of the top-ranking teams advanced. This is their second year competing, and they did a fantastic job. I'm so very proud of them. You are moving mountains. Thank you, you two. You did a great job.
Thanks to all of you for the support of our district. We hope you will join us in the Ingrid Day Commons just outside the auditorium doors to enjoy some punching cookies. Again, another round of a haul for all of our winners.